Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Asheville City Council meeting for November the 12th, 2013, 11, 12, 13. And just for the record, it's my last meeting as mayor, and I'm really excited about that in many different ways. Tonight, we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Hey, I see a couple of Boy Scouts on the back door. You want to be put on the spot? Come up here and lead the Pledge of Allegiance? Come on. Your time to be a part of Asheville's history. It looks like, really? Tonight? Thank you, guys. If you'll come up, and we'll wait on you right here in the microphone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of doing the invocation. It's funny, eight years ago, I had the opportunity to do the invocation after my swearing-in. And so, I'm really happy that it fell on me to be able to do the invocation as I leave after 14 years on City Council. And this will be a brief meeting. I figured that the new administration is ready to go and want to get on to doing the people's business. And I do want to announce that the swearing-in isn't December 3rd, which has been said several times on the news. It's actually December the 10th. The mayor-elect has something going on, and she won't be here on December 3rd. And so, she is the mayor-elect, and so she's able to pick the date that she chooses, which is December the 10th. So she comes in now. But tonight is special to me. It is my last meeting. It's 11, 12, 13, and so I'll be able to remember that for many years to come. But the nostalgic part of this is, I grew up looking at this building. My mom lives less than a mile away in the house that she got when she worked three jobs to get that house. And it's funny for me, and as mayor, I get to hold a gavel so I can go on a little bit longer if I want to. The funny part about being mayor of Asheville, it has been humbling and has been a wonderful opportunity. But it's one of those things that my grandmother used to say, that never let anyone limit your dreams. And she used to clean rooms over at Brooks House Home. And it's amazing that her granddaughter now has the opportunity to be mayor of the city where she cleaned rooms. Going to Africa was life, it was transformational to hear, I had the opportunity to speak to school kids, and to hear them say, what class are you in? What class has your government put you in? And to be able to proudly say, in America, you limit yourself, not your government. And that to tell them that I grew up poor, but now I'm the mayor of the city of Asheville. I grew up with a mom who went to AB Tech, great institution, but who wanted more from me, and I graduated from UNC Charlotte. To be able to tell them that I live in a country where, when we say that you can pursue life and liberty, that we have a government that's of the people, by the people, and for the people, they're not documents that are written in stone, or documents that's written on parchment paper, just hidden. They are what we live and breathe in this country. And being mayor of this city has been a blessing. Has it been easy? No. I'll be able to talk about that later. No, I'm not looking at it. It hasn't been easy. But one of my favorite poems is by Langston Hughes, and it talks about life not being crystal stairs. And it's a mother talking to her son about the fact that it's not easy. But I've learned in life, you don't do things because it's easy, you do it because it's right. So tonight, my invocation isn't necessarily a prayer. It's just to say thank you. I am extremely grateful to have had this honor to sit here. It is something that less than 50 people, if I count it right, have had the honor of doing. So it's not that I don't pray and wouldn't love to lead you on in prayer to God and try to save you. I'm just kidding. But tonight, I just have a heart filled with gratitude. A heart that says, thank you so very much. That as we look at November being a time that we're thankful for our nation, we're thankful for our community. I just want to say, I'm thankful for each one of you. You have made me stronger in a lot of different ways. I was talking to a leader today. The scars that I have tell me that I'm human. It tells me that I have a story, and I have a testimony. That this too shall pass isn't just a saying. I've lived it, and I've done it in the best city in the United States. And I wouldn't trade anything for my journey, and that I'm so grateful to have been mayor of this wonderful city. So that's my invocation, and I just say, thank you all so very much. We have the consent agenda. Any member of the public wishing to address council on any item on our consent agenda, items A through N, may do so at this time. Any member of council? All right, yes, Councilman Hunt.
One of the items on the consent agenda is updating with amendments to our Greenways master plan. Mayor, I just came from a master plan review session for the Hominy Creek Greenway that's underway right now at River Lincoln. They'll be going another hour or two. And I want council to know that there are some happy Greenway advocates. This is the first update we've done since we adopted the plan four years ago, and the updates are much needed for various different reasons. We'll hear more about that in the news over the next few months and years, I know. But anyway, I just, I want to especially thank staff for the great work in really fine-tuning this in a smart way, and I'm glad for it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So is that the beginning of a motion?
I move adoption of the consent agenda, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
And for the questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries. Council, we have two great presentations. The first one is from the North Carolina Department of Transportation on diverging diamond interchange at I-26 and Airport Road. I asked for this update because it's a transformational project that's coming to our community, and I asked that DOT come explain it to our community officially. So John Confortini, Forte? No, John's not here tonight. Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'm Jim Dunlop. I'm the congestion management engineer for NC DOT, and thank you for the opportunity to update you on this project. Let me, there we go. Diverging Diamond Interchange is a new concept in traffic engineering. Diverging Diamond, also known as a DDI for short, FHWA calls them double crossover diamonds or DCDs. So you may hear a couple of different names when you look at things. Basically, the diverging diamond is designed to have the two directions of traffic on your road that crosses a freeway cross over to the left or the British side of the road in order to provide easier access onto and off of the freeway. What it does is it limits the number of traffic signal phases that you encounter at the interchange, and allows the motors to get through a little quicker. Movements on and off of the interchange, off of the freeway, have less conflicts and, in some cases, may be free-flowing. It moves a high volume of traffic without increasing the number of lanes at the interchange. Concept was first identified by a grad student from Maryland over, he was taking a vacation in France, noticed this interchange, and as traffic engineers tend to do, you know, we go to France, instead of taking pictures of the Eiffel Tower, Sean said, "Hey, we take pictures of interchanges." He brought the concept back, we looked at it. It took a little while for it to take. Missouri was the first state that took the plunge in 2009, put in the first DDI in the country. That's in the left side of the picture in Springfield, Missouri. The one on the upper right is from Utah, which is the first one that was a complete reconstruction of an interchange. As of the last time I had a chance to check, in July, there are about 20 interchanges, DDI's that are completed and operational in the country. I get news releases through Google Alerts every week. It seems like another one's either being talked about or opened up. What are the benefits of a DDI? First, safety. We have fewer conflict points than what we would have at a standard diamond interchange. Conflict points where travel paths, vehicle travel paths either cross, merge, or diverge. So we go from 30 from a conventional diamond interchange down to 18. When you have fewer conflict points, that means there's less of a chance for a crash. We have better sight distance at the turns. Wrongway entry onto the freeway, which is a major problem when someone's going east in the westbound direction, that normally when there's a crash there, it's usually going to be a fatal. Because of the way the interchange can be designed, we virtually eliminate that problem. Before Missouri went ahead and did the first one, they did a lot of testing. FHWA helped with that with some of their facilities. We found almost no driver confusion. The drivers understand the concept. Really, when you get to operations, it's very simple. If you're going left on the freeway, you stay the left. If you're going to the right, you stay the right. If you're going through, you use the appropriate lanes to go through. It increases the left turn capacity without adding lanes. When you think about a standard diamond interchange, those turn lanes are essentially parking lots. They're storing vehicles until they get the little window of time at the signal to turn left. With diverging diamond, you set up before the interchange, so when you're on the interchange bridge itself, you're already set up in your lanes, and you keep moving. Two phases at the signals each time, you know, you have the main street, that's the green, and then you have the ramp traffic, that's a second phase. With a traditional diamond, you'd add the left turn onto the ramp. That's three phases. Diverging diamond cuts the signals down to two phases. That's really where we get most of our operational benefit. And then, benefit. And then, as I mentioned again, vehicles stack before you get into the interchange, so you're not fighting for that little space in between which can back out into the main From a cost standpoint, a retrofit of the bridge, like the one in Asheville, at Asheville Airport that I'll show in a minute or two, the retrofit costs a very inexpensive relative to reconstructing a brand-new bridge with a new interchange concept. Usually, the existing bridge can be used. Additional right-of-way is rarely needed. For a new interchange, we can narrow the width of the bridge, that saves money. And also, there are some benefits from a construction standpoint. It's easier to construct because it's easier to move traffic back and forth on the interchange. Bikes, trucks, emergency vehicles really operate the same way as they would through an interchange, through a standard diamond. All of our interchange is designed to handle trucks. They have no trouble with the crisscross intersection and the angles, either through the crisscross intersection or onto or off of the ramps. Access fire trucks, emergency vehicles, it's the same as any other diamond interchange. And if bicycles need to be accommodated, which of course we want to, we can either provide a wide outside lane or a separate bike lane. The bikes, bike lane is to the right, and it continues to the interchange just as you would. It's actually better for the bikes because there's less distance that they're exposed to crossing vehicles. At a standard diamond, you'd cross the left turns going onto the ramp, the left turns coming off the other ramp, and also, so you're exposed in two directions. With the diverging diamond, the bikes have a much shorter crossing, and they're only exposed on one side. Pedestrians also are accommodated. Missouri found that the best place to put the pedestrians is right in the center of the bridge. While it seems counterintuitive that that would be a safe place for the pedestrians to be, really is very comfortable, and also, on either end of the bridge, we can have all of the pedestrian movements under signal control. That's a better situation than we would have with the standard diamond. Also, the crossings are shorter, and again, the traffic's only coming from one direction, so the pedestrians have less exposure. Should be safer for the pedestrians. The one on the right is from Atlanta, which is probably the closest, one of the closest DDI's here, either this or Alcoa, Tennessee. I took that picture last year in the center. It's a wider path, feels very comfortable, did not feel like I'm constrained, and that's been the experience of most pedestrians. Council members from the town of Cornelius, which also has a retrofit just about to be going to construction, took a trip to the one in Springfield. Basically, had their meeting in the middle of the interchange without any problems, any Speaking of Cornelius, this is the interchange that they have. They requested this. We've studied it, saw it was the right answer here. This is the existing interchange at Catawba Avenue. And then, just laying on the top of, on the top of the aerial with the plans, you see that it fits essentially in the same space. What was previously proposed here was a single-point urban interchange. Long Shoals Road would be an example of that. Much bigger bridge, very costly to construct. The single point and the DDI have essentially the same traffic operations. However, diverging diamond is going to be a lot less expensive to construct. Our estimate for the reconstruction of Catawba Avenue in Cornelius with a single point was $30 million. A lot of that had to do with construction phasing, trying to build that much bigger bridge while maintaining traffic. The diverging diamond, which was let to contract in September, is right about $5.5 million. So you can see a huge savings, and it'll be built a lot faster than it would have with the single point. Coming closer here at Asheville Airport at NC 280 and I-26, very similar situation to what Catawba Avenue was. What you have is the standard diamond. You can see widening from three or four years ago to add turn lanes on the ramp. Even with those turn lanes, we're still limited to the six lanes that are on the bridge. Processing the vehicles through the two signals in the interchange is very difficult, and you've seen the backups that result from, rarely, people crossing each other, the paths. The left turns off the ramp have to cross the paths. The left turns, they're turning onto the freeway as well as the through moves. With the diverging diamond, I mean, with diverging diamond operation is much simpler. Here's our initial analysis when we first looked at this in 2008. We had 2008 traffic counts. You can see the red is where the traffic is at a level of service E or F. We grade our roads A through F, just like in school. However, unlike in school, we are actually very happy to get a D on it when we can. You see here with the existing configuration, existing traffic, level service E mostly, Ds, and F, and also extensive queuing throughout the interchange. When we look at the existing counts, putting it into the diverging diamond interchange with the same cross-section of the bridge, you see As and Bs. Even going out to 2025, which is what we did basically to indicate this project was a good one, you still see some Cs, some queuing getting on 280 as you're approaching the interchange, nothing in the interchange itself. With the existing diamond, you see all Fs and really bad queuing. So it's a huge difference from a traffic operations standpoint. Here's the plans. We also had planned to let this in September. Our bids came in, actually 49% higher than our engineers' estimate. We are rebidding this project in January, hope to talk to the construction firms that did bid, and hope to encourage more to get the cost much closer to what we had in Cornelius. The black lines that you see here is the design that's laid on top of the existing aerial. You'll see that it fits essentially in the same space. As we were developing this project, we did identify an issue. One of the things that we have, that we know is an issue when we put in diverging diamond is we fix the interchange, and then we have adjacent intersections that have the multi-phase signals and cause problems for the interchange. And basically, when you fix the interchange, it looks like we've moved the traffic over to the other intersection. What's really happened is the interchange has been fixed so much, that problem goes away, and then you start noticing the other intersections, which are lesser problem, but still a problem. In particular, at the airport, we had the driveway to the general aviation, and I also believe there's a fire station either built or about to be built at that location. On the other side, you have the car dealer's driveway, which are way too close to the interchange now, and will be even closer because we're moving the interchange over. What we're doing is changing the configuration, the airport entrance, to allow ingress and egress to the general aviation part, and as well, putting in a service road to the car dealer so we can come down to the first intersection that's already signalized. We're not just putting them in and just saying, here, go at it. We have some information brochures. Left a few copies with the city clerk that she can pass to you later, distribute, and I've got a couple extras for the public. In addition, we have a video. It's actually our number-one hit on YouTube. If you search NC DOT and DDI, you'll pull this up. I've seen this used across the country. Newspapers and TV stations use this to explain how to drive a DDI. By the time the first DDI is open in North Carolina for operation next spring, unless we get more utility conflicts that have delayed it a few months, we should have a webpage that be able to go to in addition to the YouTube page. We have 12 currently underway. Seven are under construction. Two, the Catawba Avenue and the Asheville ones, are ready to be let, and we have three others that are being worked on right now. Again, DDI is safer, operationally better in particular locations. There will be some interchanges where a DDI will make the operation worse. If we don't have the ramp traffic, then a DDI is not a good fit. But what we've identified with that list is projects we have right now that are good fits. Asheville Airport, especially using the bridge, reusing the bridge that we have now is a great fit for a DDI. With that, happy to take questions?
Okay. First, I want to say thank you so very much for coming and explaining it. And Garrett, I do have a question or request from you. With the video, which is very popular on YouTube, is there any way we can get that out to people? And the reason I say that is because we had people hitting roundabouts years ago when we started putting them in, and so if people know that they can find more information out, see how it runs and works, I think people will actually take advantage of it, and it may save people the hardship of causing any problems.
That's a good idea.
You can, the video is right here. Your IT person grabbed it from YouTube and put it on here. It's about a four or five-minute video, so I didn't want to show it from a time standpoint today.
If we could just get that out, because I think it's something new. It sounds like it's going to save a lot of congestion and money, and so just letting the community have an opportunity to understand it in advance of it being implemented would, I think, really help the community as a whole. Council, any comments, questions?
Having come across a diverging diamond interchange one time, I didn't know it was there. It was very intuitive. I was through it before I really understood what I was driving through, and it was really seamless. And aside from the, whoa, this is weird, I'm on the wrong side of the street, it just flowed very seamlessly.
That's the, that's the response we've gotten from a lot of people who drive through for the first time is, oh, we just drove through it. We didn't even realize it.
Okay. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Council, the next order of business is getting a program update for Mission Health, and Dr. Ron Polis is going to make the presentation, and I think he's going to introduce his team with him as well. And as he and Gio come forward, I do want to say, thank you for being such a good corporate citizen and willing to meet with city council to discuss issues, to work with us in real way, and thank you for helping to arrange that. I sincerely appreciate the time that I've had, the opportunity to work with Mission. You all have been great corporate citizens, and I sincerely appreciate that you've already set up a meeting with the next administration, because that's how you do. And I appreciate that communication and it being open and free-flowing, so thank you so very much.
Well, thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to be here at the transition point. We've appreciated our time working with you, and of course, the council members, and we look forward to working with Esther and the rest of you going forward in that regard. Let me introduce my partner, Jill Hoagre-Green, who's the president and COO of Mission Health.
It's a pleasure to be here today. And to take just a few minutes to give you an update of the wonderful things that are happening at Mission Health. You know, it's an amazing time right now in healthcare, anywhere around the country, with lots of creativity and challenges. And it was actually fun following the innovation that just occurred, because what really needs to happen in healthcare is a lot of innovation and a lot of redesign.
And this is really a, almost like a preview of coming attractions. You all know that we have plans to build a new tower, bringing our two campuses together. But what you're less familiar with is the work that we're doing right now to sort of re-engineer and redesign our processes so that we're ready to go into that new building. And we want to start out, and since he didn't show the video, we're going to. Impressive. So, thank you. We, as you know, I've shared previously here that because of our demographics, the fact that we're older, poorer, sicker, less likely to take care of ourselves than others in the state and nation, and because of issues with federal and state governments, you know, we're facing a $350 million reimbursement reduction over the next 10 years. And if we're not doing things like that each and every day to become more efficient, we're not going to be able to provide the services that we have for so long, but we will.
What's so exciting is we have engaged many of our physicians, nurses, caregivers at the bedside and throughout Mission Health, and we're looking at every process. This is learning the most we can from manufacturing industries and others, the best we can from healthcare, and then taking each process and making it more reliable, safer, more effective. And while we do that, it's actually reducing costs. So unlike a lot of places around the country that are facing the same circumstances and kind of doing an arbitrary way of reducing, we are focusing on how do we actually make healthcare better so that we can continue to serve effectively in the years to come.
So I'll just close with this, that coming back to that building, as an example of our inefficiencies related to two campuses, it's embarrassing, but 11,000 times per year we put somebody in an ambulance at all times of day and night and move the patient across the street so that they can access some service that's not available on the other side of the street. That in and of itself is about a $2.5 million annually additional expenditure that we really shouldn't have. Over the life of a building, the building cost itself is only 10% of the total cost. The 90% of the cost over the life of a building is the people and the equipment and the processes. Just yesterday, there was a publication in one of the clinical journals that showed that intraoperative radiation for breast cancer is the equivalent of an entire series of radiation therapies after discharge from surgery. Our operating rooms don't have the ceiling heights that would enable us to implement all of these technologies. So a lot more to come. We look forward to partnering with the city, not only to redesign Mission, but to, as Gary has indicated, take advantage of ways to work together to sort of frame that part of Asheville and improve it and support it. And we want to let you know that we're able and willing partners along that path.
We're looking forward to continuing to serve and we're looking forward at the dialogue going forward.
Thank you so very much. And as I open up for counsel, I do want to say thank you so very much for naming one doctor's drive building after Jeff Bowen, our firefighter, who perished in the fire in that building. And I want to say thank you so very much for doing that for our community and working quickly to heal that building and it helped heal our community. So thank you so very much. Counsel, I'll open it up. Any questions or comments? You rendered us speechless, how about that?
Hey, I'll take that as a win.
All right. They'll see you next month.
Okay, we look forward to it.
All right, thank you. Counsel, we only have one public hearing tonight and Julia Fields will lead us through that, but everyone who will be speaking on this issue will need to be sworn or affirmed. And Jamie, deputy city clerk, will do that for you. So anyone who's in the room, who likes public hearings, who may think, they may be inspired to speak, may be an expert on an issue that may come forward, if you could come at this time to be sworn or affirmed. You may be here for something else, but you like public hearings. I have one more. Thank you very much. Ms. Fields, if you will introduce and open the process for the public hearing to consider an amendment to a previously approved conditional use permit for the construction of a health and workforce development facility at Asheville-Bunkham Technical Community College.
Mayor Bellamy, members of council, you've seen this site before, so I'll try to be brief. It is 12.87 acre portion of the AB Tech campus located off of Victoria Road on a drive that has now been newly named Genevieve Circle, and that will be the road that will go through this portion of the campus. Here's Livingston, here's Victoria, here's the Asheville High School campus, Oakland Drive, and here's the road that goes on to the rest of the AB Tech campus. On December 11th, 2012, the Asheville City Council voted to approve a conditional use permit for a new 184,000, approximately 184,000 square foot allied health and workforce facility for Asheville-Bunkham Technical Community College to be constructed on the site that I just introduced to you. The building was to be located on the western portion of the site, back towards the Erskine Street apartments, with a footprint of 47,000 square feet. It was designed to be a mixed-use facility, housing classrooms, laboratories, offices, the campus daycare center, and an 864-seat auditorium. The only existing building under the previous plan that would remain was Ivy Building. It's a former chapel, and that was the only building that was scheduled to remain under this plan, under the previous plan. I'm going to briefly just put up, here was the design of the building, the front facade of the building. Again, this is the previous plan. I'm not going to address the design, I'm going to leave that to the applicant. Bunkham County, who is the applicant in this case, is back now with an amendment to the conditional use permit that addressed some of the concerns that had been raised with the original design, the concern being the size, the expense of the building, and also there was concern with the proximity to the residential community behind the building. The new proposal reduces the size of the building to 169,000 square feet, 14,660 feet less. It moves the building, as I indicated, to the eastern portion of the property, along Victoria Road, 400 feet further from the adjoining neighborhoods than the original design. The footprint is reduced by 10,888 square feet, and the height is basically the same actually this building because the reduced footprint would be about seven feet taller. As before, this building is designed to be LEED certified. Additionally, this new proposal retains not only the Ivy Building, but it also retains the existing childcare facility and also retains, you recall from this previous drawing, when the childcare facility disappeared and there was a playing field that's here that was shown to be parking in the previous design, you'll see here now that it's proposed to be retained. Buffers still provided where the property adjoins residential development, and as before, the existing two access points along Victoria Road will be improved. And as before, a bus shelter is proposed on the Asheville High side here of Victoria Road, and a new sidewalk will be constructed all along the side of Victoria Road adjacent to the campus. A meeting for interested folks was held on October 15th. Very few people were in attendance, but it's my understanding that the applicant has met subsequently with neighborhood contacts to try to reach out to them since so few people came to the actual meeting. And I'll let them again, just like the design, discuss that with you. And here is the front facade of the new building. So I'll leave all these materials up here for comparative purposes. I'm not sure exactly what all the applicant has to present to you, but they can feel free to use these as well. At the technical review committee meeting held on October 21st of this year, the committee reviewed and approved this amendment with conditions. This matter, because it's a conditional use permit amendment, did not have to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So now it's before you and that completes my presentation.
And if we could have, we'll open a public hearing, beginning with the representative from the developer. And John, if you could just state your name for the record.
I'm John Creighton, Assistant County Manager, Man of Mayor, council members. Basically, we came back and, well, we basically went through a redesign process and I personally think we came up with a better building. One, it doesn't impact the surrounding community like it did. We came away with less parking, we saved the green space, the soccer field in the back. And I think the most important part of it is that pulling the building up on front on Victoria lets you know that you're actually on AB Tech campus now when you come down Victoria Road. Where before, it's set so far back that you really, you know, it would be a tall building that sat back behind the trees. And I think now it gives a sense of, okay, I've arrived. And I think that was the most important part, from the county's viewpoint, that we really wanted to change. I'd like to ask Scott Donald to come up and answer any kind of questions you may have about the appearance of the building or anything else, but like I say, I personally think that we came back with a better product. Also, the interim president of AB Tech is here also. If you have any questions, Dennis King is present. And if nothing else, I'd like to introduce Dennis, if you would, just kind of stand up a second, but he's also a president. Thank you.
Okay. Any other member of the community wishing to address counsel on this issue? All right, we'll close the public hearing. The public counsel, comment. Counsel, any questions or comments or a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the conditional use permit amendment adopting the proposed plan for Asheville-Bunkham Technical Community College allied health and workforce development facility, subject to the conditions recommended by staff. I find that this request is reasonable and is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans based on information provided in the staff report and as stated in the staff recommendation.
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Counsel, we have a couple of items under unfinished business, an issue that we talked about briefly a couple of weeks ago, and they are: Item A, concealed handguns. Number one, an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances to revise the definition of recreational facilities, where the carrying of concealed handguns is permitted, prohibited, and pursuant to state law. Roderick Semen, no, not Roger. Okay. Janice, all right.
Yes.
I guess Roger should back up.
If you want to. It really went into the legal staff realm, so that's why I thought you wanted me to present.
Why don't I write with me?
Okay. And then Roger, of course, is here for backup. I'm Janice Ashley, Assistant City Attorney for the Legal Staff. And I'll be brief because this matter did come before you at the last council session and then has been to two public safety, considered by the Public Safety Commission twice as well. But this is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the prohibition of concealed handguns in certain city recreational facilities. Just a brief history, you'll recall that in 2011, the state legislature passed a law which prohibited municipalities from regulating concealed handguns in parks, but allowed municipalities to prohibit handguns in certain, in recreational facilities. And they defined recreational facilities at that time as playgrounds, athletic fields, swimming pools, and athletic facilities. Now, in the 2013 legislative session, they've come back and further limited in municipalities' ability to regulate concealed handguns by redefining recreational facilities to no longer include playgrounds and also to define athletic fields that can only be prohibited if the athletic field is programmed and during an athletic event. They still, the definition of recreational facility still includes swimming pools and athletic facilities. So to summarize, under the new law, the city still has the ability to prohibit concealed handguns in swimming pools and athletic facilities like gymnasiums, but cannot prohibit concealed handguns in playgrounds and athletic fields during, when there is no event. In order to comply with the state law, the staff is recommending that we amend our ordinance to comply with the state law so that the city is still able to prohibit where we are able to under the law, to the fullest extent able by the law. That's my summary. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you for the summary, counsel. This is not a public hearing, so the first thing I need to do is have a motion from counsel for public comment.
I have a question for Janice.
Janice?
Janice, what would happen if we didn't do this tonight?
It's our legal opinion that, this law went into effect October 1st, 2013. If we don't update our law to make it in compliance, then I would say our whole ordinance that we have would be, could be at risk of being considered invalid, meaning that we wouldn't be able to prohibit where we are still able to prohibit, in athletic facilities and in swimming pools and in athletic fields during an event. So that's why we advise that we do make this in compliance with the law.
Thank you.
Is there a motion? Casper Davis?
Mayor, of course, we've had the opportunity to look at this twice now at public safety and I think that the disturbing part is just what Ms. Ashley said, that we're having to do this in order to be able to protect some facilities for people carrying handguns into recreational areas that are programmed. And it's disturbing to me that this morning's headline in the Asheville Citizen Times made it look as though counsel was setting about enabling handguns to be carried into recreational areas. And it's kind of fuzzy the way it is, but what we're really doing tonight is doing the best job we can to protect our children and citizens and older citizens who are using recreational areas by approving this. And it's very tempting not to, but if we don't do it, then we put at risk our citizens. So at this time, I will move that we approve the adoption of the ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Code of Ordinances to revise the definition of recreational facilities where the carrying of concealed handguns is prohibited.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any additional comments from counsel?
I would add to what Jan Davis just said. It's a shame that it's been presented as if we were somehow loosening the rules. What we're doing tonight here is to preserve as much control as we can preserve under the idiotic laws passed by our state legislature.
Any member of the community wishing to address counsel on this issue?
And let me just, for the record, following counsel's adoption of this amendment, Councilwoman Mannheimer will also follow with a resolution of opposition.
Any member of the community wishing to address counsel on this issue? Yes, sir. Please come forward and state your name for the record.
My name is Dean Worley. I am a proponent of concealed carry, and I'm not going to ask if any of the council members are concealed carry. members are concealed carry permit holders, but I'm just wondering if you're aware of the rules and regulations that a person that applies and goes through the training for concealed carry has to go by once they get a concealed carry. It's very, very tight. You're not allowed any alcohol or drugs, illegal drugs, in your system if you're carrying concealed. You can go into a building with 300 offices, if one of them is a federal, city, state, county office, you're not allowed to carry into that building. I feel that most people that apply for concealed carry, they're being asked and agreeing to much more stringent guidelines than just the average person that's allowed to have a handgun legally. So as we've seen, you have these school shootings that go on, and people are being, people that take these guns and go to do harm are going to places where there are no guns allowed, okay? And that's a big debate in the news media and across, especially with our representatives in Washington. I feel that somebody that has a concealed carry is agreeing to a much stronger set of rules imposed upon themselves, and therefore, they're more respectable of the law. I certainly am as a concealed carry permit holder, and I feel like that if you go to a park and you're there, if I was a bad guy and I went to a park and I knew that guns were not allowed, period, at this park, then that would basically give you more of an opportunity. If you wanted to do something bad with a gun, you'd have the opportunity, but you go into a park and you know that good citizens are, or there might be some of them there with a handgun that will protect their family and the rest of the citizens if they have to. Nobody wants to have to do something like that, but if you have to, and these bad guys know that somebody is there that might be carrying a gun concealed, the chances of them maybe, you know, being, staying under control might be, might be greater. And like I say, I feel that a person that has a handgun, you know, concealed carry permit, they're agreeing to this, this guidelines that makes it a lot harder on them, you know, to be a concealed carry holder, so they're more, they're more in line with obeying the law and doing the right thing by having that handgun. So that's just basically my comment, and I feel like it would be, I think it would be a better thing for, for the, you know, for the city if this was allowed, so that's basically what I have to say.
All right, thank you for saying it.
All right, thank you.
Any other member of the community wishing to address counsel on this particular issue? Any of my boy scouts, it looks like you're ready. You can do so at this time, just come for it. Anyone can address counsel, it's okay. Or not. This is your time. You sure? You can come for it, just come for it, state your name, state your position. Just state your name.
Aaron.
All right, Aaron, what's your last name?
Field.
Aaron Field, tell me your thoughts. Go right ahead. You have three minutes.
Thoughts about what?
Did you want to speak about the issue? No?
The issue of...
Guns.
The bicycle or the mission hospital thing?
We're talking about guns now.
Oh. See, if guns aren't allowed at school, then why would police officers be carrying guns everywhere? I mean, they should, it's basically just like encouraging people that it's okay, even though that they're trying to say it isn't.
That's fair. Thank you, Aaron. Anything else?
No.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address counsel? It's his legal right to come address this counsel, and he had, yes, his right, as any other adult in the United States to come before this counsel, so I respect what he had to say. Thank you, Aaron. All right, counsel, we'll close the public comment. Any further questions or comments on the motion on the table? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Next is the Resolution opposing Session Laws 2001, 2011-268 and 2013-369, limiting municipal authority to regulate concealed carry in municipal parks and playgrounds. Marylette Manheimer.
Thank you, mayor. Martha McGlohan and I worked on this resolution in opposition to the legislation that the mayor already stated is in the title, and the reason was in hopes to make it clear to our citizens that, what we've already talked about, that this ordinance amendment is required under state law, and that the state law specifically preempts cities from regulating concealed carry in any way that's inconsistent with the state requirements. And so our ordinance we're adopting tonight brings us into compliance with the new state law. However, personally, I have concerns about the state law. I have heard from law enforcement that there is a concern about the clarity or lack thereof in terms of enforcement, because we now have a situation where what we think of as a park is really carved up into sections. You have a playground, you might have a picnic area, you might have a ball field, you might have a greenway, and there are different rules for concealed carry in the different sections of the park. So the city cannot prohibit concealed carry in the playground, but can prohibit concealed carry at the ball field if there's a scheduled athletic event. The city cannot prohibit concealed carry on the greenway, but could prohibit concealed carry at the swimming pool. So from law enforcement's standpoint, it becomes pretty difficult, because in a matter of feet, you can just walk through the different sections of the park and have different rules that apply. And also, you know, I think there is a legitimate question about why, why it might be necessary to intervene in cities' ability to regulate their parks. You know, this is another tension between legislative action and cities' desires to regulate themselves and their citizens' desire to regulate their cities in the ways they see fit. You know, Asheville may have a different understanding of what Asheville wants to allow in parks versus Fayetteville, just as an example. And why shouldn't this decision be able to be made on a local level with our citizenry input reflecting what our goals and concerns are as a community? But in any event, we, there is also a concern that this legislation is vague, the terms are not defined, there wasn't discussion providing any of the intent behind this legislation, so it's somewhat difficult to interpret, and other cities have also adopted protest resolutions in the hopes that the legislature will revisit this issue and bring some clarity to it. I do have one, just an edit on the third whereas. The third line right in the middle where it says athletic, and athletic fields when they are, should be, are not being used for an organized athletic event. So with that, with that amendment, I would so move the adoption of the Resolution opposing Session Laws 2011-268 and 2013-269 relating to the state legislature's ban on North Carolina cities' ability to restrict possession of concealed handguns in municipal parks and recreational facilities.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries. All right, counsel, I'm going to turn it over to the vice mayor to go over the boards and commissions' recommendations.
Thank you, mayor. All right, the first board is the ABC Board. The board recommends the reappointment of Bill Lack, who's currently serving and eligible to serve another term. Boards and commissions recommend the same. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Citizens Police Advisory Committee, and boards and commissions recommend the appointment of Larry Holt. This must be a representative from central, the central area of the city.
Second.
I guess I made that motion then, second? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then finally, on the recreation board, boards and commissions recommend the appointment of Pierce. We had one applicant from the county and three from the city.
And I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, the relevance of an applicant from the county is?
Well, it's the city, the city's recreation board. There's always a, if Maggie were here, she'd state that we generally do not appoint folks from the county.
It's not prohibited, just we...
Not, not a rule.
Move to appoint Mr. Pierce.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then finally, we have the appointment to the Historic Resource Commission, and when we last met, we determined that we were going to interview two candidates, and the two candidates happened to know one another and did not want to compete for the position, so Mr. Richard Fast visited with us today for the interview, and he is a highly qualified candidate, and boards and commissions did not discuss whether or not to recommend his appointment, because we went on to interview him. If there's a motion to appoint him, though...
Move to appoint.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. That is it. That concludes words and conclusions.
All right, counsel, we're moving on to informal discussion and public comment. Any member of the community wishing to address counsel on any item tonight? Yes, sir. Mr. Sadler, this will be the last time I have an opportunity to hear your brilliant remarks, so come for it. What issues plague thou?
Good evening, city council. My name is Timothy Sadler, and wanted to bring to your attention a wonderful experience I had working through the Civic Center, and that was on behalf of a local nonprofit, Veterans Helping Veterans. We were able to man the concession stands at the Civic Center, or the U.S. Cellular Center, I should say, this past Mountain Oasis Music Festival, and in return, we were able to generate money to our nonprofit, which is working to build a sustainable community for veterans in general, but specifically homeless vets. And anyway, through that experience, it got me thinking about how this model could really be effective in the future of the city, how we're limited in revenue opportunities, and that's going to continue to be the case, how this model of partnering with local agencies to provide labor for particular projects may be a way to reduce expense to the city. In particular, it occurred to me that the bus shelters, we may be able to partner with an agency such as GO, Asheville Green Opportunities, to construct the shelters, and then partner with them also in installing those shelters. Not only would it be keeping more money in the community, providing work, but it would also, of course, be saving the city money. So wanted to share that, and also thank Mayor Bellamy for your service. I know that affordable housing was one of your big issues when you ran, and the city is light years from where it was back then, so thank you and congratulations to our new mayor, Manheimer. I greatly look forward to this next city council, and that's it.
All right. Thank you so very much for coming and not having anything plaguing you, but wanting to say some good things, so thank you, Mr. Sadler.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate that. Any member of the community wishing to address counsel on any other matter? All right, counsel, I would like to invite the community, December the 2nd is my ceremonial portrait hanging, and invite the community to come at 5:00, and then a reception over at the Wild My Culture Center. Do you want to invite people on December the 10th?
On December the 10th, the new, the new and renewed city council will be sworn in at 4:00 here in council chambers. Everyone is invited.
All right, we do have a closed session.
Mayor, I move that Asheville City Council go into closed session for the following reasons. One, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged and confidential pursuant to the laws of North Carolina or not considered public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statues. The law that makes the information privileged and confidential is North Carolina General Statues 143-318.103. Statutory authorization is contained in NCGS 143-318.11A1. Second, to consult with an attorney employed by the city about matters with respect to which the attorney-client privilege between the city and its attorney must be preserved, including a lawsuit involving the following parties, D&amp;J Real Estate Investments LLC versus City of Asheville, D&amp;J Real Estate Investments LLC versus Wells Fargo Bank et al. The statutory authorization is contained in GS 143-318.11A3. Third, to establish or instruct the city's staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the city in negotiating the terms of contracts for the acquisition of real estate. The statutory authorization is contained in GS 143-318.11A5.
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Any additional comments from counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Counsel will dismiss, adjourn the meeting officially from the closed session. No announcements will be made. Meeting adjourned. Oh, in closed session, sorry. That's done.